Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live on the City Hamilton and are tempered by our chat on the City website. Other individuals in the meeting may be audibly or visually recording the meeting. Electronic devices are to be switched to a non audible function during meetings. That per company changes to be done.
Yes, Mr. Chair, with one change. Add consent item five point two respecting West Harbor real estate development and disposition opportunities final consultant report.
Great. My please have a motion to approve the attendance event against Collins, against the far all in favor. Carry it. Any declarations of interest? I see none. My please have a motion to approve the August fourth, two thousand sixteen minutes of West Harbor development subcommittee, cancel far cancel Collins, all in favor. Carry it. Item five point one is an information report respecting West Harbor implementation plan. Here's five through seven and period public projects. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? I see a discussion, cancel far cancel Collins, all in favor. Item five point two is an information report respecting West Harbor real estate development and disposition opportunities. This is the final consulting report. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? I see none, cancel Collins, cancel far all in favor. Carry it. Great. We are at item seven point one. We now have a presentation from Chris Phillips and over Kim respecting the period solicitation process staff recommendations. This is an overview of pending staff recommendations to GIC and council. Thus, I call on Chris Phillips and Mr. Kim to make their presentation. Please report it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While Philbert is getting set, I'm just going to kind of introduce from here and then with Philbert's make the presentation. This presentation is really meant to give a synopsis and a highlight and a status update for the subcommittee as to artwork on the solicitation process for the period lands specifically. Philbert actually gave a presentation, I think, at the last subcommittee meeting where he highlighted the main principles that we were looking at. Since that time, we've gone through a pretty extensive process relating to research as far as best practices go, research as it relates to our consulting team, community consultation, and now staff is starting to formulate the actual presentation and recommendations that we're looking to bring to GIC on November second. Before I introduce Philbert, all of you also know Sheila Bond, who's here behind me. Oh, right beside me. Sheila is our lead consultant from Deloitte. Sheila is here as well to, on behalf of her team at Deloitte, in order to answer any questions on some will be up here as well. So now I'll just hand it over to Mr. Kim.
Thanks, Chris. Just want to say thank you to visiting members of the subcommittee, trouble staffers and members of the media and the public for giving us the opportunity to give an update on where we're at with the solicitation process recommendation for pure date. As you all know, we were asked by council and directed by council to come up with a strategy that we would be presenting in the fourth quarter of this year, which we are now in. And in fact, we will be coming forth with a staff recommendation formally to GIC on November second. So today's presentation is really just a high level preview to this subcommittee so that everyone sort of has a heads up and is aware of what's coming in the next few weeks. And just as a quick summary, this is a outline of recommendations that will be forthcoming. Ultimately, the focus is on two items. One is the solicitation process itself, so that's actually the process and methodology by which staff intend and recommend bringing forth the lands to market. The other piece is what we refer to as the offering strategy. It's really what we're talking about is a number of attributes with respect to either constraints or mandated elements with regards to the lands themselves, which ultimately define the risk reward profile of the opportunity to the development community. Ultimately, the approval of these recommendations, what we may ultimately enact, well firstly, enable us as staff to formally start the process of bringing these lines to market, which can start with a pre qualification stage. Secondly, there's some embedded strategies that we'd like to move forward with that will help us maintain a level of transparency with this process as well as hopefully result in better aligned proposals in the end as well. Thirdly, the, we're asking for approval and principle of certain attributes of the vision that we feel need to be articulated at this early stage in the process so that interested bidders have some degree of understanding as to what the expectations will be from the city's perspective. And lastly, part of our recommendation will be to allow us as staff to return to GIC and council at a later time, the target in the spring of two thousand seventeen. We'll bring forward a more detailed set of recommendations specifically regarding the details of the solicited proposals themselves, so some of the attributes that would be included in the request for proposal stage, and I'll get to that as we talk about it. You'd seen this slide at the previous subcommittee presentation that we had made. Our intent is to come forward with a balanced recommendation. By balanced, we mean multiple perspectives, allowing council and committee to be able to sort of understand from all sides some of the opinions that have been garnered. We've got public opinion that we've been doing quite a bit of public consultation throughout the summer months. We've got industry input, which is through the, through a market sounding process that we went through through consultants over the summer months, as well as our technical inputs. So the work that Deloitte has been doing for us, actually, previous, you know, the previous agenda item noted that there was a portfolio strategy for West Harbor that just got added, and that supports the policy direction that we're currently taking specifically for pure eight, as well as some other work that we did on first with regards to the solicitation strategy. And on top of that, we've done a fair amount of best practice research as well, looking at some of our peers across Canada and how they've done similar types of best solicitations. What I'd like to note is that the input from all of these background research will be included as appendices to our forthcoming staff report, so you will be able to see and read them all in full detail what that staff report is issued. So I just want to give a very quick overview. I won't do too much detail with what we've done with regards to the research, but you can see that we have reviewed and talked with a number of our peer municipalities and other public bodies across Canada who have been, who have already run a process to dispose of and partner with the private development industry with respect to public lands. So we're not reinventing the wheel here, that there is some comfort in knowing that there are some best practices that have been established over the years. However, there's, it's always in plus the body of knowledge continues to grow. Everyone that we talked to, there wasn't a single peer who said that they had figured it out, and in fact, they're quite interested to see what we as a state Hamilton do with our particular process on pure eight, and are interested to see if we can come up with some new tactics and strategies to add to that growing of knowledge. In selecting our peers that we reviewed, what we did want to do is we wanted to focus on situations that are very similar to pure eight. So in all these cases, they have some combination of the following attributes. They're large scale sites with strategic locations that have been used as a catalyst or contributor to a broader precinct revitalization. There are similar attributes to pure eight in terms of physicals, so waterfront, brown field or environmentally sensitive lands, urban locations and mixed use visions. And in all cases, they all use the sale of their land or the solicitation of their lands as a way to also sort of leverage other city building type of commitments for the developers. So they were not just purely transactional where they were just selling for a price. In general, the messages that we heard from them are varied, but some of the common themes regarding relationships, so in all cases, our peers said when they went through this process, what the most important thing was, was recognizing that even though these aren't technically partnerships per se in a corporate sense, they are all partnership type relationships, and finding a partner is a very important piece of this, if not the most primitive piece of it. Transparency also, as all republic agencies as we are as well, recognize that transparency in the process, not just from a public perspective, but also too in terms of working with the industry. You know, it also is not completely new, it's still fairly new, the idea of public and private working together in a partnership and maintaining a certain level of reputation in the marketplace is an important piece of it. And thirdly, the third theme was really about desired outcomes. An important message that we heard from our peers was that it's important for us as a city, if we're going to get into these types of engagements, is to be clear about what we want and need and require as a municipality and what it is that we expect from our partners. In terms of public consultation, as you know, a lot of what we've been doing with respect to pure eight is really follows along setting sale. There's a number of guiding principles in setting sale, and then the public also had identified that there are a couple of other principles that they felt were quite important, which includes affordability and accessibility. So we really talk about ten principles. That really guides everything that we've done up to date and will continue to do so. With respect to the solicitation itself, as we were developing this strategy, we wanted the public to have an opportunity to give some input into. When we talk about going to the marketplace and asking for proposals, what we're really doing is we're talking about letting the industry know what's important to us as a city and what's important to us in terms of values, not just monetary value, of course, but other values that regard civic and social outcomes. So we had a number of workshops in the summer, which allowed participants to give their direct input into this and have some influence over the recommendations that will be forthcoming in November. Really what we're trying to do is we're trying to answer three questions. Can we agree on what a winning bid should look like? How can we articulate those desires to the interested bidders? And how can we encourage innovation through this process? And innovation is a, is an important part of this entire process. It's one of the principles that we held dearly through developing the strategy itself, and I can talk about that a little bit later. Through the public consultation, we really heard three messages, none of which I think are any surprise to anyone, but it did reinforce what we thought that the, and knew that the public was thinking. Firstly, is that for the most part, the general public understands that the city is in a position where this is, there is a transaction element to this, there are financial outcomes that are hopefully going to be achieved in this, but they also wish that the city pursues with a balance eye towards the sale price and also community benefits. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. Their priorities seem to reveal that affordability, environmental sustainability, family friendly options and appropriate commercial uses are a priority. Also, I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. And thirdly, one of the elements that we did want to ask was, in terms of the range of delivery mechanisms for affordable housing units and what the definition of affordability is, we did find through the sample that we did do these workshops with, that they do believe that affordability can be delivered through a different, through a number of different business models in ten years, ten years meaning rental or ownership, and that a mix was preferred. So there was no actual dominant opinion with respect to how affordability could be approached. Our third, our second pillar was going to the industry and talking to the industry and finding out how they felt about the, the vision that has already been laid out in setting sale, as well as certain elements that ultimately will affect their level of interest in the period solicitation process itself. So we hired the Altus Group, which is Canada's largest appraisal and market research firm in the real estate field, and on our behalf, they went out and we actually had a longer list of a number of developers across Canada that were potential participants in this process. They were all folks who had experience either in medium density type of development, perhaps all already previous experience in Hamilton, large scale master plan developments, and a number of other different type of attributes. And we whittled that down and started reaching out. And the list that you see up here is the list that participated. They actually are a fairly diverse group who have quite a deep level of experience in this type of, this type of development that pure eight will be. And they were very open about their opinions, and they gave their thoughts on a number of different topics, and interestingly enough, pretty much for every topic, they were divided. I mean, there was a broad, I should say divided, but there was a broad spectrum of opinion that came through their responses, which tells us that for the most part, all developers are uniquely different in terms of their risk tolerances, their reward expectations, their willingness to cooperate with other partners, willingness to cooperate with municipalities. And most importantly, I think, the one theme that came through was their desire to bring innovative solutions to the table. So rather than being told what exactly they're going to build, they feel obviously that they can bring a lot of ideas to the table, and really what, you know, back to them is the heart of what this partnership is all about, is that we as the city have desired outcomes and they come with potential solutions. So there's a quick overview of some of the opinions. I won't go into each one individually, but as I said, there is a fair amount of spectrum of opinion on each of these items, and you know, it's, for us, what we were able to take from all this is that there isn't necessarily one way to go about the solicitation process that's necessarily going to generate absolutely the best bids. So what we have to do is we have to put together a process that effectively filters out a very large pool and hopefully is able to focus in on exactly who the right party for us is and the right concept and set of, set of innovative ideas. So in terms of the solicitation process itself, this is a term I think you had seen before in the last go around of our presentations, and we haven't deviated from that at all. In fact, everything that we've seen through our consultations with industry and with the public, as well as our best practices research, seems to reinforce that this is the right approach, the multi-stage, a three-stage approach. Starts with a pre qualification stage that will eventually end in a shortlist. Ultimately, that shortlist then will be invited to submit proposals that specific to their concept, financial bid, how the relationship will be governed, and a number of other different elements. And then there's a negotiation stage, and at that stage, that's really where we're talking about the financial deal itself, including potential ground structure, contractual clauses, as well as how the relationship will be governed. Throughout this process, or to put this process together, we had a number of guiding principles. They were ultimately first and foremost partnerships, as we had previously mentioned, that that was what our peers had told us is a very important thing to be focused on. Transparency as well, innovation, which I mentioned previously, and the fourth one for us is value. And that really speaks to a number of different things. It's not just about the dollar value, of course, but as we had said, there is a number of values that we hold dear as Hamiltonians and that we want to make sure that they come through in this process. But also on top of that is long-term control is a piece of that value. So we want to ensure that, you know, throughout the process of getting pure eight developed, that the city continues to have some ownership or control for how it happens. It's not just a one and done where a transaction occurs and now all of a sudden that the developer controls and owns the lands and they do within how they want. Or what they want is the ability for us as the city to be able to continue to participate in that, have control over that, and also to participate in long-term value capture is an important piece of that as well. So recognizing that this is a fairly large development, and as it builds out, it's going to take a number of years for this to build out, to full build out, and we as a city want to ensure that we get to participate in the long-term value capture as those pieces of land increase in value that we somehow participate in that. So in the forthcoming recommendations to GIC, you will see that there's other elements that we want to add into the process, one of them being a fairness monitor that was seen as a very common best practice that was used to ensure transparency throughout the, throughout the entire process. Also, other pieces that are, that will need to be considered or that we are considering already, how procurement and legal and other divisions within the administration fit into our process, and we have been working with those divisions already, as well as how we're going to get this to market in terms of just a pure marketing strategy. Obviously, that's a big element of it. We wanted to make sure that we generate a certain wide and deep level of interest from the developing community, and marketing strategy is one of the things that Deloitte will also be helping us with. In terms of timing, our intent would be to give an approval from GIC and council to start, as I said, with the RFQ process that would kick off in Q one, two thousand seventeen, so as early as possible in the new year, aiming to have a shortlist announced sometime in the spring, so that then we can release the RFP to that shortlist and give them a few months for them to submit. It would come close by the end of two thousand seventeen, which would give us, put us in a position to announce finalists in the first quarter of two thousand eighteen, and then we would come back to council with a strategy to, with a recommendation for how to approach the negotiations with the finalists themselves. The other piece is, you know, we've, we've thought through a lot of how the process is going to work, a number of the offering strategy items, which I'll talk to in a minute, but there's still quite a lot of detail with respect to the nuances of, you know, these values that we're going to be asking for throughout this, the RFP process to the shortlist, and we would like an opportunity to come back to council around the end of Q one, beginning of Q two, to be able to talk in more detail about what those elements will entail. So in terms of if we are given the approval to move forward with, starting with the RFQ stage, this is really what an RFQ will focus on. It really focuses on the who question, so the who are you, not so much on the what is your price or what is your concept even look like. This speaks to our principle of really focusing on relationship first and foremost, so the idea of needing that we really, really care deeply about who it is that we're potentially going to partner with, and therefore, the shortlist that we're going to target is going to be a fairly small shortlist. At this point, we're recommending a shortlist of three to five participants. So, you know, we want to know a lot of things about those who are interested in bidding in this process, and as you can see beyond just their corporate profile, but you know, who they are, their team composition, their team leadership, who they partner with as well. We will be encouraging consortium bids. I think that's a really great way for groups of many different sizes and capabilities to be able to actually come together and put together something really strong and quite interesting and innovative as well. So we want to know who their partners are, and probably at this stage also who their desire, that they intend to use or be desired, so that we have a sense as to architecturally what, what their bid might look like. It would work for them to articulate how their visions, how their, their own values align with us, align with what we are looking for in pure eight, so that speaks to their areas of expertise, their competitive advantages, their actual record of experience, or their track record in portfolio of things that they've done in the past, that are actually quite similar to pure eight hopefully. And the last that we'd like to highlight is their financial capacity. This was seen as a very important piece of the puzzle in many of the peers that we spoke to, financial capacity, and spreading for financial capacity was seen as sort of ultimately a major break element on some of the projects that are pure projects that we had looked at, and there was quite a bit of discourse regarding that. So it was identified that identifying financial capacity is a very important piece of this. So it was identified that identifying financial capacity is a very important piece of this. So there are a number of items, even though we're in an early stage and as I said, the RFQ is only going to focus primarily on the who question, there are certain elements of the what that we as a city, I think at this point, need to be able to articulate to some degree, because it sets the level of expectations for the interested bidders. So the interested bidders do want to know to some degree how the city feels about certain elements, so that in all honesty, if they decide that they're not in alignment with those things, they can self-select themselves out of the process. And in the long run, I think that that's seen as beneficial for everyone involved. You'll see up here a number of items. Those are elements that you, that we will be making firm recommendations on in the staff report. Items like the block offering, phasing plan, price discovery, and policy integrity really speak to the bidding framework, so how we expect interested parties to be thinking about what their bids, how their bids will be formulated. Whereas items like environmental conditions, sustainability, and affordability speak to the site attributes, so some of the things that we will be expecting that bids do include as part of their concept. A few that I'll highlight right now, probably the biggest one that affects so many of the others is the block offerings. The block offering is really the concept of, as you know, there will be nine development blocks that get created by the planned subdivision. And the question is, is do you bring them one by one, cluster by cluster, or all at once to the market? Our recommendation will be that we bring it all as one. Looking for a single winning bidder, however, that does not necessarily mean that it would be a single transaction itself. Tied to that is the notion of the phasing plan. So we will be making a recommendation that, we won't make a firm recommendation or rigid mandate in terms of how the development blocks will be phased in terms of development and timing. In fact, we'll leave that open to bidders, so that they can hopefully come up with a creative idea that works both for us and for them as well. And that will be reflected also in the deal structure at the negotiation phase. And in terms of policy integrity, that's also one that I think is really important. We do want all bidders to recognize that setting sale took quite a long time and collaborative effort between the city and the public and Council and staff and everyone involved. And that the intent is for us to, or our recommendation is to hold true to setting sale and say that all explicitly, all bids must be on the basis of setting sale. So that's all the policy, the policy directions that are given in setting sale. And then anyone who comes with a bid that is significantly outside of setting sale will be instantly disqualified from that process. That doesn't mean, though, that setting sale, because although it's a secondary plan document and it has policies in it, there are a little bit of variance that is obviously available. So some might come with a variance to that and we'll look at those on a case-by-case basis. But for the most part, setting sale will be upheld and the integrity of that policy will be upheld throughout the process. So just to wrap up quickly, I'll give you a sense as to what this looks like in terms of timelines and sequence of events. So the large, so each of the arrow, the large arrows represents a year, 2016, 17, and 18. We're in that bright green large phase in 2016 where we've been doing all of our research and our consultations. And you can see, so the stars represent where we're coming to Council and Committee for approvals. And the other dots are major milestones in the process, like the opening of the RFQ stage, the announcement of shortlist, and so on. So you can see here, as we head to the end of 2016, we'll be coming forward for a recommendation to Committee and Council. And if we're given the go-ahead, as you can see, we will kick off the process with the RFQ in early 2017. All the way, running all the way down, you'll see in around Q1, Q2 is when we come back with further recommendations with regards to the RFQ process. And then our next touchpoint specifically with four approvals from Committee and Council will be in Q1 of 2018. At that point, we'll be announcing finalists from, that's amongst the shortlist bidders in the RFQ process. And we'll also be recommending a transaction negotiation strategy at that point as well. And then ultimately, the goal is that those transactions will be, that staff will be authorized to move forward with the strategy and have those contracts enabled and signed sometime in mid-2018. And as you can see, that's all ultimately lines up with the current term of Council as well. Lastly, we recognize that the solicitation process that we are outlining runs parallel to a number of other things that are happening at Pier Eight and at the nearby waterfront sites. As you all know, the rezoning subdivision applications are currently in right now for review by Planning. And we understand that that recommendation from Planning will be coming forth to Committee and Council, Planning Committee and Council, I think it's December of this year, so you can expect that. And the site servicing activities have been ongoing and we recognize that there's currently a budget envelope that has been committed to by Council, but that there's further works that are projected out past 2019. And we recognize that there will probably be some discussion regarding that as well. But notwithstanding, we recognize that the current activities that are approved will get us to a point where at the end of the solicitation process, once we've identified our partner or partners, that they will be in a position to hopefully be able to actually kick off their development permit approval application process imminently after they've been approved and after we've entered into contracts with them. Obviously, that's all subject to what the market says. But our hope is that this process of bringing, of bringing the less to market for Pier Eight ultimately ends in finding a partner that we're all happy with and a concept that we're all happy with as the City of Hamilton. So with that, thank you for your time. And I think we'll open ourselves up to some questions if you have any. Thank you very much. First on my list is Counselor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. It's agree to Philbert. Philbert took a good presentation. Quick question in terms of, you referenced it, the marketing strategy. One of my questions I had written down was how we advertise the plan and the RFQ and subsequent, well, we're advertising the RFP, as you have the shortlist. But the RFQ, how's that advertised across the province and across the nation?
Through the Chair, first and foremost, we are working closely with procurement. So all of this will be branded as the City of Hamilton. It goes through our normal procurement channels. So we use Provalent, Lebiddingo as our platform for advertising for RFPs and RFQs. So we'll be there as well. But from a more of a marketing standpoint, our hope is that we can approach the development industry. So those in the industry, obviously, once the RFP is on Lebiddingo, it's public, then it's really a matter of generating interest. So Deloitte will be able to help us with that. They have broad and deep connections throughout the entire industry across the country and internationally. There is a large real estate forum that's coming up in December that happens in Toronto, which is the largest real estate forum in Canada every year. Our intent to be there and to make sure that we're meeting with folks who might be interested in getting them on a mailing list. Even just the market sounding itself, the process of selecting our participants was a great pre-marketing effort. It made people aware of the project, those who weren't aware of it. And we started reaching out and asking if they were interested in participating. And he said, oh, they weren't even aware of this. And once they weren't even aware, they said, oh, well, actually, I'm quite interested in that. In fact, some of the participants previously weren't aware of this opportunity until they were reached out to.
And in terms of the record site condition and the servicing issues, we plan to have those matters resolved by the time the RFP is in the works.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's our intention is servicing will be in the ground and ready to roll. The Public Works, Lardford Development Office is doing that. On the RSC side of it, yes, that's our intention is actually run in parallel with that process as well.
Okay, thanks for that. Another question is related to, I know we contemplated the extension of CID to this area and then at one point decided against it. But obviously, the REIS program, and there are some others that would assist those who are making their way through the RFQ process, is that something we advertise concurrently with the package? When does that occur in terms of advising either the winner or those that are bidding that there are programs to assist with, in this, in one case, contamination issues?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Our intention is to create what's called a data room of information that will contain all the relevant documents that relate to the solicitation process itself. Included in that will be high-level policy documents like setting sale, like the urban design guidelines, like the zoning, but will also contain things like incentive program. As you said, we refer to, we have had a long discussion as to whether or not other incentives would make sense. Since we're solely talking over the Pier Eight events here, we certainly have always felt that because we actually own the lands themselves and a part of this negotiation will also be on price, it really did require additional incentives of the kind. But certainly from a marketing aspect, we will look to show everyone who's interested that there are programs, a REIS being the predominant one.
Okay. My last question centers around the phasing of the development today. I've been curious to this process in terms of how we'll treat that. We certainly, you know, we've been very aggressive in terms of our public investment, whether it be servicing the public realm projects that we've, we're now accelerating as part of this process. And so we've tried to, certainly the direction from Council is to get this done as soon as possible, because there's great benefits in the city on many levels. I'm curious to know how we treat the phasing of the development with the prospective winner of this process, or whatever developer, source who needs to lead to this process? As I've watched other files, it allowed the private sector to develop these over a period of time. Airports, for example, some of the promises that are made in front of that process take a lot longer than we would have anticipated through the negotiating process. So I know you have a crystal ball, but are we firm with the timelines that we give to developers? Do you foresee the city requiring that all of the parcels need to be developed within a certain timeframe? Or are you more flexible with that to suggest that, you know, based on parking conditions, they're allowed to build those parcels really along their own timelines, as long as they pay taxes for, and they're following the plan? I think as you've emphasized several times, we're okay with that. So again, no crystal ball here, just who the bidder is or how that transpires over a period of time. But what's your vision in terms of allowing developers to build this? You've already recognized that it's a phased process. How long or how short is that timeline and your vision? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll only start maybe ask Shiller to kind of give some comments as well. As it relates to phasing, I think from our standpoint, it's really about looking at, if you remember back to the urban design guidelines, they laid out a kind of a practical phasing strategy, going from Guy Street moving on towards the waterfront. And fundamentally, our concern is exactly your same concern. We want to make sure that the process sets up in such a way that the clear expectation is that this is not a speculation play whatsoever. This is a play, this whole process is set up in order to achieve the vision and the goals that the city's laid out and not, and in a timely manner. So we're certainly not looking to encourage any kind of a phasing plan that would be slow and would be anyone kind of sitting on the lands themselves. That said, when Philbert in this presentation made note of this, the phasing plan leading into the marketplace, we also thought that it was fair, looking at the market soundings, working with Deloitte, and even just talking to the development industry, that I think every developer may look at the site slightly different as to where they saw the market being and which blocks they thought would make sense to bring to market first. So when we talk about the phasing plan along the marketplace to react to that, it really is getting their thoughts on what that, what that plan is. We want to make sure that we're going to encourage the fact that these blocks will be built out over a timeframe that seems to make sense, given market conditions, though, however. And the one we have to that, I thought, which was really key, which does come down to absorption rates, which means the number of units that are actually sold in that kind of housing stock in a particular year. That is kind of a key stat that both we realized in the Altus market soundings, actually Deloitte, their background reports have raised it. And if you remember even back to the servicing study, it was one of the comments that Deloitte, sorry, that Dylan and Altis paid when we got that as well, which is for this type of housing stock in Hamilton, the numbers are still relatively low in comparison to other unit stocks. None of us really know, as it relates to the crystal ball, whether they're low because that kind of housing stock hasn't really been available, whether waterfront lands like this have not been available, or is it something of the marketplace itself? So that will certainly be a condition that needs to be placed in. But absolutely, our goal here, which is, I think the emphatic goal that Council has set, is they want to see development happen. They want to see it happen in a timely manner. And all throughout this process, we'll make sure that we urge that same type of urgency to it.
Thank you. Through to the Chair. So during the background study, we spoke a great length regarding the absorption that Chris just spoke about of housing serviced by unit type. As part of this process, as part of this data room that Chris spoke about, we envisioned putting that documentation in the data rooms. There's full disclosure to the development community. They understand what the historic norms have been. And then they can assess of that what's appropriate for this particular property and then which units, whether it's the front or the back, or how this all comes together. And then attach that to the financials and then attach that to their proposal submission as well. So it becomes very well disclosed through the process that you know what you're getting at the beginning.
And I do recall the information on the commercial component in terms of the strength position it was in, will be in, when these, in the nights come to market, the residential level, we can refresh our memory on that component in terms of this stuff. Was that a 10, 15-year period? I can't recall, it's been so time, if you're correct.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe that's, that was about the timeframe. I think that the absorption rate was either taken by 200 units a year was the notion in this stuff.
Great, thanks. So your questions and ideas, please take a little bit of a rest at the appropriate time.
Thanks very much. Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Philbert. Philbert dimensions, there are four times you can see them here somewhere. You have these summer workshops, part of this engagement from the Gango and public consultation slide exercises for those workshops, we're going to inform this solicitation strategy. Through you, Chair. That's, I'm glad you brought that up in the later slides. But how long have you been consulting? I've never seen a consultation to such a greater capacity than what we do in West Harbor monthly or even more than that. How long has this been going on, this consultation in general?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the question. In fact, one of our entities for staff report is a summary of all of the engagements that have happened with respect to this West Harbor portfolio. And it looks like in terms of the Pier Eight itself, I show here on our timelines, since May of 2015, we've been talking about the urban design study. And that's really building off of setting sale. And since then, we have acquired a number of different types of interactions that we've had with the public, both on a consultative, informing, and involving basis. The list goes on and on, whether it's monthly, regular monthly meetings that happen up on the storefront on James York, the public engagement booths that have happened around the city. In fact, very much every ward visited this summer by my colleague, Peter Abachla. And making sure that people are aware that this project is happening and that the public has opportunity and many opportunities to contribute. Our colleagues from Planning and from Public Works as well have been participating in conversation coaches, which allow people to just drop in and ask whatever questions that they might have. that they might have with regards to the process. So we've had quite a bit of consultation with respect to our summer workshops. Those actually were specifically designed to focus on the solicitation process itself. So it wasn't just about informing about what's happening, but giving people an opportunity to participate and give their direct personal opinions as to how they feel about what we should be reflecting in terms of the city's values through the solicitation process.
Excellent, thank you. And thanks to all the staff, many of you here now who participated in this unprecedented consult, starting in my time anyway, I should say, I'm not sure of other major panels and endeavors that may have seen one. Through you, Chair, on the market sounding bullet page, prominent messages, I'm not surprised to first feel the bullet to see that when you went up to market and you surveyed these potential investors, let's face it, what they say is attractive, the market absorption prices may, and a feasibility, and Deloitte talked some to that in previous reports. How can we compare and contrast through you, Chair, to Filbert on whether or not, while it's a survey, it's also their first kick in the can to negotiate? And I'm not, I'm looking at that as more of a negotiation bullet than a bullet that suggests an overly accurate. So when you look at things like this, and then the other one, the other bullet, District Energy is workable, ethereal, limited experience in the marketplace. Well, maybe for residential this town, but certainly District Energy has proven to be very, I find incorrect that we know, has proved to be very successful. So how much of this market sounding in general, through you, Chair, is more their first kick at negotiating as opposed to true? True?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I know it's a, it's a very good question. Obviously, it's an opportunity for a developer to see what's on their mind and whether that is positioning or posturing. Of course, we can't say with certainty, but in terms of the question about absorption, we do have factual evidence of what the historical absorption is. We have had past feasibility studies done on our behalf that take that historical absorption into consideration. You know, the question of valuation is always an opinion. It's, you know, a reason would go through a number of different tests. And obviously, the feasibility question for a developer really has to do with how marketable their units are. I can't say with certainty whether or not that this is an opportunity for a developer to just posture a position as a first kick in the can, as you might say, but it's just something that we have to consider. It's obviously not going to be the only thing that we consider through this. And as we get to the negotiation stage, that's ultimately where we ourselves are going to protect ourselves and our ourselves with some valuations as well that obviously will stand counter to what a developer might come forward. With respect to the District Energy question, yeah, it's just a question, it's a sample of eight participants and after that eight, I actually said, it's really about their own experience. What we really wanted to do is get a sense as to how familiar folks were in the industry with District Energy and whether they could share some experience as to whether they thought that it was good that in different, these are all just opinions and just questions that were, as I said, a sample of eight. We expect more than just those eight to be participating in the solicitation process. So it was really just like to get a sample of opinions.
Yeah, that one District Energy really stood out to me, Mr. Chair. And I think, you know, in part, it's, the onus is on you, CEO, to really sell it. I see it as a great advantage on our side in the, in the going forward negotiating process. So just want to touch briefly on Counselor Collins, I'm not surprised he's been on the waterfront files since his first term as a counselor, I think. So all of his good questions and input and his attendance at many of these engagement sessions have been very much appreciated, as well as his positivity when we're talking on it in the Bard or otherwise. So I appreciate that. But on the, the focus of this policy integrity, Chris, through you, you called about, you called it holding true, and I like that, hold true on what has been over a decade of planning for the Set In Sale secondary plan. I know we can't, or can legally make it binding that the holding true takes place for these nine parcels, or how do we, how do we really maintain a path that prevents us from A, speculation, as was previously mentioned, or B, through this process, we get to, we get to go through the RFQ, Mr. Developer, Mrs. Developer, you get to the RFP, Mr. and Mrs. Developer, and all while you're pitching something that really fits that particular piece, you're saying you're holding true. Now you got it, and all of a sudden, you're pitching this with something that's completely different than what got you to that point. I'm trying to understand how we can hold true from, I hesitate to say a legal standpoint, but how can we make it binding almost through you, Chair? Okay?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Trying to answer the question, maybe some assistance on the legal side. As it relates to how we're proposing the process was to take place, the RFQ stage, so in a three-stage process, the RFQ stage and the RFP stage kind of go together. Filbert mentioned how the RFQ is really a purely individual or urban group, the company that is sorting, actually is and what their parameters are. The RFP is really now down to, what is it that they're proposing to do with the lands, their phasing, their pricing, and how they conform with our vision? Our recommendations are solely predicated on the fact that Setting Sale and the other policy documents, the design study, designs, are all the things that are actually integral to the, to our process. So proposals that come forward and even firms that come forward right from the very beginning, the onus is on them to understand what those documents are and therefore try to work those policies in to their individual performance as to whether or not they engage to pursue this as an opportunity. But secondarily, obviously on, on the pricing records of the land. So their proposals will only be judged on the basis of Setting Sale itself. The third phase is the transaction negotiation phase. At that stage, as Filbert mentioned in the presentation, we would come to council with a, with a strategy, with Deloitte being our, our lead consultant on this, would be, here's what we would propose as the strategy as to how we would do that final negotiation. As it relates to conditions, that would be the moment in time where you layer on the condition, if you, if council wanted to, where we could, we could say to the developer in this transaction that potentially they could never go through any sort of planning process that would change the configuration of the lands. At this stage, what we're, what we're kind of saying is that's really at the negotiation stage and the transaction stage. We think that that's probably where that aspect of it should, should stay. And as Filbert kind of mentioned as well, the idea of value capture over time is kind of really integral to that. Our proposal stage or our recommendations are that Setting Sale is the key driver for every proposal that, that takes place as we kind of go forward. If council wishes to layer specific conditions onto those lines after, they certainly have the right to do as far as, as far as, you know, the decision.
Okay, good, thank you. Much appreciated again. See a lot of people up there who have spent their hours on individual scenarios, whether it's Al with the cadets or Hall with the engagement or Gavin with expediating our, our public amenities and working with us to accommodate those needs. Seymour and Russell up there with our program management, Ed with his engineering expertise and really good rapport with the community early and clearly admire. This is an incredible team and it's demonstrating, obviously, the nature of this priority among many creditors with the city. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, very great.
Thank you, staff as well. I think the great reports that Filbert too. One of the things that you mentioned that you report to Filbert was that, that there was a comment from the developers that they wanted to see a commitment to public space when this town is being used. What was their intent here? Not that we're not committed to public space, but I mean, they wanted to see an upfront investment or a dollar above the site, but what did they do?
Through the Chair, thanks for the question. I think the, the comment was actually quite simply, from a developer standpoint, knowing that the city has made a commitment to actually build up the public space as envisioned through Setting Sale and the Urban Design Study is an important piece of that because I can think of other examples and other municipalities where I'm sure that it's been promised, but perhaps never followed through on. And so it's really just a comment that knowing that, that all the work that the city will do in terms of the public realm adds to the value to the developer in terms of what the developer lands are.
Of course, okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much. And we made, we made, have we locked in some level, we set out a plan in terms of how we're going to deal with the public realm space?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, in fact, I, not just a reiterate, Filbert said, you actually, maybe even more, but a key, key element, yes, the reality is council, I believe going back five, 10 years, has actually committed up till the end of 2018, $80 million to, to this particular idea of not only accelerating to make the lands development ready and therefore a development opportunity here, but actually the public space commitment as well. And certainly this subcommittee over the last couple of years has made an even larger effort to accelerate those plans as well. So if we were to go back to the market soundings today, I think going to your question as it relates to the market soundings, that would actually add tremendous value to the private sector, the fact that we've accelerated those plans and made firms a commitment. Because as Filbert said, there's others jurisdictions when they go out with proposals like this where many promises are maybe made or maybe many visions are kind of laid out there, but the half behind them isn't there to, to part of, certainly this council and councils agree with. You've, you've put a major skin in the game and I think what the market soundings really are showing is that they understand that commitment and that it will certainly add value, not just for the timing of the project, but also for the development lines themselves.
Great, thank you. You know what, so I completely agree and I would assume that as we go through to our Q process, that, that element of kind of investment will be made, will be part of that, something that they're fully aware of, that we, we've already got money invested and have made commitments in future years to move forward, proposing to be recovered and won't still affect the current force. Is that exactly the case when we go through the RFQ?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, for sure. We'll outline all the, all the plans, all the dollar figures and in fact, our commitment that those, those projects, especially the public realm in the year six, seven, and eight era, will actually be, I mean, our mandates to complete those projects by 2018, 2019.
Great, thank you. It's not only the kind of creativity or unique design and environmental leadership, sustainability is a pretty, remind me of a pretty important issue as we get up to that, what we are, what we build. So you mentioned Filbert in your presentation that clearly this is going to have to adhere to Setting Sale in general terms, but you also mentioned the variance. You kind of mentioned in passing that, you know, some sort of variance might be allowed, but we're already put sufficient on that on the base. So can you shed some more on that?
Through the Chair. Yeah, I was just going to really talk about minor variances, so the types of issues that could go through, just minor variance can be. What I wanted to emphasize was that anyone who's coming forward with something that's materially misaligned with the current land frameworks, as I said, would instantly be disqualified, but it is foreseeable that some might come forward with a type of design or something that would really come as they work their way to the same, like control stage or what were more of our variances.
Okay, thank you for that. I was sure that makes sense. The last one in terms of District Energy is a, a very conservative, you know, I think, you know, the, it has very good benefits to the municipality in respect for the environment and smart, and all the objectives that we have. So I'm not surprised that your developers say that it may not, from their perspective, be of a high importance or value, but, you know, I'm wondering if we could not put into our Q process some sort of, and I know the market listeners on this are pretty heavily involved in District Energy, but they haven't made a requirement for developers that they tie into District Energy, but they have made it a requirement that they explain why they cannot participate in the District Energy system in other words, but you know, some didn't tell us what, why, why not, why can you not participate in a, you know, effective, efficient and environmentally efficient District Energy system? So that's something that we could contemplate putting into this process, I think that might be helpful.
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's certainly an element that we've discussed, that our entire staff team has had clearly significant conversations with Health and Community Energy on the possibilities of doing District Energy on the period. Let me picture it breaking down into two components. First is relating to the Altus market soundings. The key piece that we were unsure about was exactly what the marketplace, how they see District Energy from a conditional aspect. So we quite frankly didn't have any experience on that and to be fair, neither of really did Health and Community Energy. They started to do some focus groups with developers, but they were at the infancy stage on that. So we decided to use this process as part to kind of get some intelligence on that. You saw what the intelligence is, which is on the residential side, there's very limited exposure to District Energy. As it relates to conditions per se, we've been, as we've said all along, we can place whichever conditions that council wants to place on this at any stage along the line. The question for us is whether or not those conditions, how they're quantified and work their, their way through. To some degree, what we're really trying to do is cast a very wide net at all interested developers out there to try to get them to explore this opportunity. District Energy is one of those ones where we're not quite sure as to whether or not placing it as a condition will encourage or detract from the overall process. We think that we do need some work to do. Your suggestion seems, seems interesting and what if we take it away as direction to see how we would work that into the process at the RFQ, RFP stage? And as Filbert mentioned in this presentation, specific to the RFP conditions, our commitment is that we're coming back to council or committee in Q1 of 2017 with those conditions. We can certainly put District Energy as part of it.
I think that's fair, I appreciate that, Chris. So let me, let me suggest to you that partners, you know, has the policy that they have to demonstrate why they cannot participate or rather than it, or require that they understand that there are some challenges in that area, but I think the greater benefits do come back to the municipality and everything certainly forward looking. So I appreciate your power of that and if you could touch base with a partner, find that valley, that what their worry is and what they like to, how is their receipt, what they're kind of felt to hear, because a lot of it all, that would be, I think, the last thing to do. You know, thank you all for a great report. I'll be happy to, as I said, or ask for it. You're appropriate, especially keeping this moving and very efficiently moving forward. I think you've been very positive and gathering closer and closer to our commitment, which is hopefully getting shuttles at the ground by 2018. If I correct, at least the goal presented on the table by 2018, I think is, is very positive and sort of something that we need to launch as well for our point of view. One final question, actually, is inclusionary zoning, not yet passed, but process of Ontario was a hand for standard, although I think there's some, some discussion in terms of adopting it as a policy for the municipality and what it does. Have you thought about how that plays out in terms of the future development decision?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Inclusionary zoning, not specifically, as you stated, looking maybe back here, I think Ed O'John did a presentation on inclusionary zoning to, to council and lay out what the track is for it. As it relates to affordable housing, just a question, affordable housing, as Filbert mentioned in, in his presentation, it kind of tops the list of, of the criteria out there that the community itself has certainly talked about. Affordability as an umbrella is certainly a key criteria that we're looking to have. As it relates to whether or not we're going to place a specific percentage on, on the period, we haven't made that determination yet. We, we certainly need to have that recommendation for November, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Those are your questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you all colleagues for your asking questions and the staff for the very informative presentations and for all of your work, which we've seen good as of today. Much appreciated. So no further indications for counselors wishing to speak or the mayor wishing to speak. Therefore, I will accept Counselor Collins' motion and put it on the floor for acceptance of the report, as seconded by Mayor Fred, all in favor.
Mayor Fred.
Thank you. Before I wrap things up, I'd just like to acknowledge the former mayor, Larry Daniels, with us. Thank you, Larry, for joining us at the meeting. Are there any matters of general, regional, or other business? I see none. Therefore, please, my, please, have a motion to adjourn. That is moved by Counselor Parker, seconded by Mayor Fred, all in favor.
Turn it.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.